Yes, that's right. That's too funny. Let's see if he makes friends or enemies. You know how old peonies bars can be. What a great turnout today.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
They've been coming over to talk.
Absolutely.
She's just, she's fun.
I love her. Yeah, yeah. I would have stayed, but I had so much other stuff going on. But, and it was nice to see Sala. We all just love her. How did you meet her?
She was on, she actually hired me for back in 2001.
Oh, no kidding.
There you go.
She is so sweet. I enjoy her. Now he's handing out peanuts, huh? Someone starts to swell up during their meeting. Can we sit that over on that table? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. I feel crowded.
Yep.
Good evening. Good evening. It is 6 o'clock PM on Tuesday, December the 10th, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order, and I'd like to welcome everyone in our city council chambers, as well as Brady Johnson and our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching the meeting by cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Graham. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Ruckregel. And Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I also ask you to keep in your thoughts, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Rick Powers, lost his mother. So I ask that you keep he and his family in your thoughts and prayers.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Euler?
This is a special city council meeting held on November 16th, 2021, and the city council meeting held on November 23rd, as printed.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any comments, questions, changes? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at public hearings. 21-361 is a public hearing regarding the disconnection of a property having the parcel ID number of 13-23-326-005. And we will need a motion to open the public hearing.
Yes. May I have a motion to open? Moved by Councilmember Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Is there anyone here that would like to speak at this public hearing regarding the disconnection of a property having the parcel ID 13-23-326-005? If you are, please come forward. Yes, please give us your name.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mike Fleming. I'm an attorney and I filed this petition on behalf of my clients Lynn and Steve Demannas, who are with me here, too. May I proceed?
Yes.
This particular piece of property is about a nine-acre outlot that was created during the subdivision of Huntington Point back about 25 years ago. Jerry Weaver, who was subdividing the property, had approached my clients because they owned the Ravina property on the west side of Huntington Point. And they thought that they might be interested in acquiring this outlot for a very nominal price. And they did, because it was adjacent to their property. It really was a piece of scrap property, if you will, as far as the subdivision was concerned. It's at the very south end. It is bordered on the west side by the Ravina property, on the north by several private lots and family residences, all improved in Huntington Point. On the east, there's a small border with another outlot. And on the south is the right-of-way of I-74. It's immediately west of the junction of I-74 and Route 6. The Ravina tracks are in the county. As the west line at Huntington Point is the dividing line between the city and the county there. And the Ravina tracks are about 100 acres, roughly. Again, all in the county. The subject property is a heavily wooded hillside. It has no street address, no, no street access. It's landlocked. And has no utility service or any other services from the city. And in fact, if there was to be some development of that property in the future, and there's nothing contemplated now, the city might potentially have some additional investment in the, in trying to provide street access, as well as other services to this property. The property has never been improved in any way. Although it pays the minimum stormwater tax, there's no, there are no impervious areas on the property. The total taxes each year, about $650, of which $70 a year goes to the city of Peoria. Since the clients have this property next door that's about 100 acres, it's in the county, doesn't make a lot of sense to them to have a 10-acre track immediately adjacent, which is subject to different rules, procedures, ordinances, departments, overseeing personnel and all that. And it was something that they didn't even really think about or realize until a year or two ago, when the stormwater assessments started coming in. So there is some mention in the staff recommendation about the city having invested, I think around $600,000 in the infrastructure of Huntington Point subdivision when it was created 25-plus years ago. But I would suggest that none of those, none of that investment benefited this property in any way, shape, or form, since, again, there's no street access. There's no, no possibility of street access that I can see from Huntington Point. The only obvious access to this would potentially be through the Ravina property, but there's no street back there at this time either, and never has been. And again, there are no services provided to the property in the sense of water, sewer, and that type of thing, electrical. So they are asking the councils permission to disconnect this property from the city and be able to join the county so that all of their land there is, is under one authority at that point. I'd be happy if, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd be happy to answer questions, or my clients would be happy to, to speak further and answer any questions, too.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jenson, did you have a question? Or, no?
No, I didn't even know my microphone was on.
Okay. Okay, I don't believe that there are any questions, but thank you for your input.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any, anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? If not, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing, moved by Councilmember Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. 21-362 is a request from the town officials to approve the November 2021 actual expenditures and to approve the December 2021 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Councilmember Graham?
I move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 21-363 is a communication from the mayor and corporation counsel with a request to approve a declaration of local state of emergency. 21-364 is a communication with a request to approve the cancellation of the regular city council meeting on December 28th, 2021. 21-365 is a communication with a request to accept a dedication deed from Lisa M. Hines to add 473 square feet to a public walkway on West Willowood Drive to include an existing sidewalk partially constructed outside the dedicated right-of-way between Lot 10, which is 1734 West Willowood Drive, and Lot 11, 1802 West Willowood Drive. 21-366 is a communication with a request to approve a sole source purchase from Wesco Distribution, Inc. in the amount of $27,846 for the Murray Baker Bridge lighting and emergency repairs. 21-367 is a communication from the city manager and Director of Public Works with a request for the following: A, to approve the low bid of NAP Concrete Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $710,319 for the 2021 sidewalk participation program; B, to approve a change order to deduct $130,319 for the 2021 sidewalk participation program bid due to a value engineering; and C, award a contract for $850,000 for the 2021 sidewalk participation program with an additional authorization of $32,631.67, that's 5.63% for contingencies, for a total contract award of $612,631.67. 21-368 is a communication with a request to approve and authorize the city manager to extend the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Peoria and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Union 51 for the period of December 1, 2021, through November 30th, 2023. 21-369 is a communication with a request to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Peoria and four labor unions, the Teamsters Local 627, Laborers Locals 165, Carpenter's Local 237, and Painters Local 157, that comprise the multi-union agreement to cover the period from December 1, 2021, through November 30th, 2023. 21-370 is a communication with a request to approve the low bid of NAP Concrete Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $461,006 and award a contract for the Spring Lane and Orchard Lane project with an additional authorization of $46,100, 10% contingencies, for a total contract authorization of $507,106. 21-371 is a communication with a request for the following: A, to approve a highway authority agreement between the city of Peoria and Ilicoe, Inc. for the property known as 3712 North University Street, Peoria, Illinois; and B, adopt an ordinance for a limited area for groundwater for properties known as parcel identification numbers as well as portions of North University Street, West War Memorial Drive, and West Stratford Drive, Peoria, Illinois. 21-372 is a communication with a request to approve a resolution approving a 401A money purchase plan document. 21-373 is a communication with a request to approve a state motor fuel tax resolution in the amount of $96,200 for supplement number one in a preliminary engineering services agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly under master services agreement number 18-369-D for the West Glen Avenue Project, North Sheridan Road on North Knoxville Avenue. 21-374 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance to rescind a portion of ordinance number 17891, amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the City of Peoria, requiring children's hospitals to be licensed. 21-375 is a communication with a request to occur with a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission to adopt an ordinance approving the designation of 1212 West Moss Avenue as a local historic landmark. 21-376 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance to hold a public hearing and, and on the creation of a tax increment financing district, to be known as the University War TIF, to be held at the January 25th, 2022 city council meeting. 21-377 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R I, single-family residential district, and a Class R III, single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 3207 North Knoxville Avenue. 21-378 is a communication from the city manager with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R IV, single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 502 West Maywood Avenue. 21-379 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R IV, single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 424 West Dubay Court. 21-380 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance granting a variance from certain provisions of the Flood Damage Prevention and Control Ordinance for the Greater Peoria Sanitary District at 2322 South Darst Street. 21-347 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance amending restaurant license requirements in Chapter 27 of the Code of the City of Peoria. 21-381 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Code of the City of Peoria regarding animal redemption and adoption fees. 21-382 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance to approve a home rule volume cap allocation for private activity bonds to the Illinois Assist MCC program. 21-383 is a communication with a request to approve the site application to change from a Class C I packaged goods liquor license to a Class A tavern liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for J.K. Williams Distilling LLC doing business as J.K. Williams Distilling, 8635 North Industrial Road, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 21-384 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Public Library Board of Trustees with a request to concur of Ruth Bitner. 21-385 is a communication with a request to receive and file the assignment of general fund fund balance in the amount of $4,38,664 for funding of pension obligations. Assignment of general fund fund balance in the amount of $8,151,000 as a transfer to the capital fund. An assignment of $500,000 in general fund fund balance in 2022 and 2023 for potential due diligence on the purchase of the water system. 21-386 is the Greater Peoria Mass Transit District's fiscal year 2021 audited financial statements with a request to receive and file. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm not a medical doctor, but I would say you have strong lungs. Thank you, thank you for your long witnesses. That was a long consent agenda. I would ask, are there any items that you would like to remove from the consent agenda? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 21-366, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. 21-368, 369, and 21-375.
Thank you. Any other items to remove from consent? Number Jensen?
21-371. And 21-382.
Thank you. Are there any other items to remove from consent? If not, can I get a motion to approve all the other items? Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion is approved unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-366 is a communication from the city manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve a sole source purchase from Wesco Distribution, Inc. in the amount of $27,846 for the Murray Baker Bridge lighting and emergency repairs.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, refresh our memory. Who paid for the new lights on the bridge?
So the agreement with IDOT was we paid for the design work for the bridge lights. IDOT paid for the construction. The maintenance of the bridge lights are the city of Peoria and East Peoria's responsibilities. We have been discussing an intergovernmental agreement that would fold in Peoria County and Tazewell County as well in order to cover those costs. In addition, we are charging individuals or nonprofits that want to use or change the colors of the bridge lights, a fee. That fee goes to offset the maintenance costs that we have and the expenses for operating those bridge lights.
So is the $27,000 only our responsibility? Is it going to be responsibility? All three will be responsible?
Ultimately, after we hammer out the agreement with the entities, that'll be split amongst everyone. And then the costs that we generate from the rent, you know, from somebody changing the colors on the bridge, that would go to offset that cost as well. Right now, it's, all the electricity is being paid for by Peoria on one side of the river and East Peoria on the other. And then this is just, since the, the year is up on the bridge warranty, on the light warranty, this is to make sure that we have the appropriate equipment in stock.
So since we don't have an agreement right now, wouldn't it be prudent for us to just wait until we have an agreement and just defer? Just, just?
No, we're going to have this cost regardless. What we would do, I mean, we would work this out with East Peoria in terms of, of the cost of the lighting. But, but we're still going to have to incur this. I would, I would strongly encourage you to do this because right now, if, let's say, one of the lights does happen to go out, since we're out of warranty, we're going to have to replace that. So we do need this, this equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Mayor, move to approve this item.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Any other discussion? Councilmember Jensen?
This does require a budget amendment, isn't that correct?
This is a budget amendment. It would require a supermajority vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
21-368 is a communication from the city manager and Human Resources Director with a request to approve and authorize the city manager to extend the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Peoria and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Union 51 for the period of December 1, 2021, through November 30th, 2021, 2023.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I have several questions related to, it's kind of blanket questions for this and the next item, so I won't repeat them all. But first one is, what are the residency provisions related to these contracts?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmen. First, I'll notice, I think there's a slight typo, so I'm glad these were pulled off the consent agenda. I believe for both 21-368 and 21-369, the terms of the agreement, since they're both three years, would be December 21, 2021, through November 30th, 2024. So I think there may have been a slight typo on the council communication. The residency requirement for both the IBEW and the trades agreement is 20 miles from the city of Peoria.
Can you explain what the $625 cash bonus is per year?
Sure. In our negotiations with both unions, there was a discussion about, or I should say, a demand for wages that were in excess of what you see here the agreement was. This was a good compromise for both parties in a way to reward those employees without having the compounding factor on their base wages. In addition, neither one of these unions, we felt, had asked for a COVID pay bonus. We also noted that both internally with the other unions and then externally, when you look across the state of Illinois at what other unions are receiving, the wages actually were higher than the 2%. So a straight cash bonus for the next three years did seem appropriate. Plus, looking at the labor market and in discussions with all of the trades, it is simply harder to find employees right now. So we thought this would be a good retention tool for the Public Works Department.
So that kind of leads into my next question as related to retention and employee search. We've got jobs out there that we're struggling to fill, like putting people in snowplows. Are there provisions in these contracts that allow us to use these folks on a plow if we need them to be on one?
For crafts and trades, that falls into your master agreement, yes. For your electricians, no. I will comment that the, all of the unions that fall under the Crafts and Trades Agreement have been very cooperative about- have been very cooperative about encouraging folks to apply for our snow routes. They're aware that we simply have a shortage of applicants this year, too. So, for electricians, no. For painters, no. We can't put those folks in snow plows, but as to the other unions, the answer is yes.
Okay. I think that's all the questions that I have. I won't be making a motion here because I'll be voting no on the residency. Thank you.
And I would note, legal counsel pointed out, these are three-year contracts that would end in 2024 versus 2023.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, on item number 21-36-368, can I get a motion on this item? Moved by Councilman Riegenbach, seconded by Councilman Velpula. Any other discussion? Please cash your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. And Madam Clerk.
21-369 is a communication from the City Manager and Human Resources Director with a request to approve and authorize the City Manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Peoria and four labor unions, the Teamsters Local 627, Laborers Local 165, Carpenters Local 237, and Painters Local 157, that comprise the multi-union agreement to cover the period from December 1, 2021 through November 30, 2024.
Councilmember Euler.
No further questions.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilman Grayup, seconded by Councilman Riegenbach. Any other discussion? Please cash your ballots. Motion passes, one nay. Euler. Madam Clerk.
21-371 is a communication from the City Manager and Public Works Director with a request for the following. A, to approve a highway authority agreement between the City of Peoria and Illico, Inc. for the property known as 3712 North University Street, Peoria, Illinois. And B, adopt an ordinance for a limited area for groundwater for properties known as parcel as well as portions of North University Street, West War Memorial Drive, and West Stratford Drive, Peoria, Illinois.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I have a couple of questions. I think it would be helpful for the audience to understand what this means when we're adopting an ordinance for a limited area for groundwater. I just want to make it clear that by doing so, we're not signing off and saying that everything's okay environmentally and that it's safe.
Correct. What this, what this ordinance does is this establishes an area where it says that, that within the groundwater protection area, you cannot use groundwater as a potable watering source. So, you can't drink the groundwater that's here because of the leaking underground storage tank that was in this area at the corner of War Memorial Drive and University. So, that's the reason why we're doing this. This is a requirement under the, under the federal leaking underground storage tank regulations, and so this just adopts it that just says, you can't, you can't drink any groundwater in this area, in this specific area. Not that anyone would, but you just, you wouldn't want to do that.
Right. And then by moving forward with both A and B, then that allows the owners to begin remediation to make it less contaminated.
That's correct.
Okay. With that, I move to approve.
Okay. Do we need separate motions, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do.
I move to approve item A.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any discussion on A? Cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Jensen.
I move to approve item B.
In the second, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
21-375 is a communication from the City Manager and Community Development Director with a request to concur with recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission to adopt an ordinance approving the designation of 1212 West Moss Avenue as a local historic landmark.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I pulled this item so that I can abstain from it since I serve as president of the organization's board, but would like to comment that I'm very enthusiastic that our board has taken the steps to put this application through under the leadership of Ed Berry, who's on our board and with us tonight, and our director, Colleen Johnson. And I, I think that, you know, having this property, this iconic home on Moss Avenue landmarked is a great asset to the City of Peoria and the Peoria Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Historic Society President. Councilmember Ruck Regal.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Grayup.
I'm sorry, I need to move.
Any other discussion? Please cash your ballots. Motion passes with one extension. Euler. Madam Clerk.
21-382 is a communication from the City Manager with a request to adopt an ordinance to approve a homeroom volume cap allocation for private activity bonds to the Illinois Assist MCC program.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of questions on this. The organization that you're proposing, we allocate the volume camp, cap to Illinois Assist MCC, is that a statewide program?
This is a statewide first-time homebuyers program that we've worked with in the past. We've actually approved other municipality, in the past, other municipalities to join up and be part of the Illinois Assist program. I think it was started in Naperville, but it is, it does apply statewide.
Do you know approximately or what percentage of Peorians receive funds through that program?
Well, I think that we've in the, in the past have had some of the information on the number of, of first-time homebuyers in Peoria, and I want to say that the number generally runs in the, in the 10 to 12 during the course of, of any given year, sometimes as many as 90. It's really done and it's managed through the, the local bankers. So, if there's a participating bank and you're going to get your mortgage, that's the way that most people will find out about this and will market that program. The, the, you know, this is not $12 million that the city is holding on to. This is a federal allocation of tax credits that we can utilize for first-time homebuyer programs like this, for housing programs, or you can use it for industrial revenue bonds. In prior years, we've, we've allocated a portion of this to the Tri-County River Valley Development Authority. They currently don't have any projects that they could utilize this for, so that's why the recommendation is that all of this go towards the IAssist program. If we don't use it, it falls into the state's allocation, unused allocation, then it gets allocated across the state in this purpose anyway.
So, I guess that as a follow-up, I just want to make sure we're using this money since we have some control in programs that Peorians benefit from. So, I don't know if there's any other local programs that qualify in the future.
No, there really isn't. This is, this is the primary way that, that these types of, of federal tax credits get allocated out, is either through this or unless there was an industrial revenue bond that could be utilized, but we haven't had any, any industrial revenue bonds that have been issued in Peoria in a number of years. So, so really, this is the, the primary focus and the primary way that we can allocate these dollars.
Okay. With that, I move to approve. Trying to make sure that we're, we're keeping our eye out for local programs as well.
Sure. Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion? Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Before we move into the next item, I just wanted to point out to those members of our audience that are watching through Comcast, I got a notice that there, there's sound, but there's no video, and I just wanted to make everyone aware that you can watch the meeting also through our YouTube channel as well as the Granicus feed on our, our website. So, there's other options, or you can listen through the Comcast feed as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We are at first readings. 21-387 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Code of the City of Peoria regarding automated traffic violations.
Mr. Manager. Oh, okay. Council Kepaska.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recently, in conversations with the school district, they've noticed more and more motorists unlawfully approaching and overtaking school buses. That's not a problem just here in Peoria, but statewide. So, recently, the Illinois Legislature passed a new law that would allow us to enter into an agreement with the school whereby if the school has sensors and cameras on their stop arms for the buses, so once those are activated, if a vehicle would wrongfully go ahead and go past that stop arm, it can be photographed from the school bus, and then that photograph shared with the police department for a violation to be entered into the system and then obviously ticketed to that individual. What you have before you tonight is just the first reading of an ordinance that would be our internal process for how we would process and handle those traffic violations. And then assuming that this ordinance passes, we will come back to you with an intergovernmental agreement we've been working on with the school district about how we would share that information and get it back and forth for proper prosecution.
That would be two school districts, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Peoria Public and Dunlap.
We will check with Dunlap. We've only been approached by Peoria Public, by District 150 at this point, but we will confirm that before we come back.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Grayup.
I wholeheartedly support this, but I do not know why the City of Peoria cannot do the same thing the City of Chicago does as relates to the people who are speeding down our streets, in our neighborhoods on a daily basis, knowing full well that we're staffed very short right now with police officers to do traffic enforcement. I've asked this question over and over and over again. We've had our meetings with our state representatives and state senators, and I'm going to ask it again in January. You can put it down. I get all kinds of reasons that make no sense. If it's good enough for Chicago, it's good enough for Peoria. We need help in the City of Peoria on this. And I think this is great. I mean, children are being endangered, but they're also being endangered by all the speeders. I don't think there's a district councilman here who doesn't hear about speeding at least several times every week. It's a huge issue, and we need to be able to generate those tickets as well. I know they have the, it's been explained to me that there was a problem with the way it was administered in Chicago. They were playing with the lights. The interval wasn't correct. People were getting tickets who shouldn't have gotten tickets. That was a problem with the technology, with the company. But just because you have a problem with the way the program works once, doesn't mean that you're always going to think every dog is going to bite you. So, I really think we need to look into this and, and full-court press with our state lawmakers on it. But we looking for a motion to receive and file?
Sure.
I'd so move.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few questions. I think it's a great idea. I'm wondering, though, it talks about how the photographs will be reviewed from a technician. Is that a City of, a City of Peoria employee? And that's my next question, is who administers this? Is it the Peoria Police Department? Is it the State's Attorney's Office?
The Peoria Police Department. We do anticipate it being somebody within the Patrol Division that would look at those citations just as they would any other traffic citation. It would go through our administrative process here at the city, not through the State's Attorney's Office.
So, will they get a ticket that'll actually go to the county court? Or it'll be a ticket that'll go here in front of our administrative hearing officer?
It will be here in front of our administrative hearing officer.
And why, I'm just curious, why is that?
I think that we will be more expedient in our ability to get them in front of a hearing officer rather than the opportunity to put them as OV's in traffic court at this point.
Okay. I just think, I mean, I guess we should, my thoughts are, I mean, maybe we should watch it because you, I mean, when you get a traffic ticket, it either gets paid or you go to court. So, I'm not quite sure why this would be handled any differently, or if people will take it less seriously if it's just going to the city administrative hearing officer.
We could certainly look into whether or not the OV process would be more appropriate, but our initial review was really a concern about expediency. We don't quite know how many tickets are going to be issued under this process, and so at this point, we want to make sure that we can prosecute those as quickly as possible to fulfill the discussions we've had with the school. We're concerned about the ability to get a, a court date in front of a.
And I guess I would just be concerned about the load. I don't know how many tickets it's going to be either, to make sure that our staff, who's already, you know, they're already really overworked and have a lot on their plates, especially those that are handling the housing cases and the things in front of the administrative hearing officer. So, I just want to make sure that we've thought, you know, are thinking ahead, and we may have to hire more staff and what that cost is going to be.
I think we would be happy to, you know, give some sort of bi-monthly report to see after this is up and running what the volume of tickets that are being issued, and then reevaluate the process if it seems like maybe it's more appropriate for Circuit Court.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Member Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of clarifying questions. This is a new technology that we don't currently have, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, who would be financially responsible for purchasing this technology? Would it be the City of Peoria, or would it be the school district, or we would both share the cost?
I think that is a point that we're working out in our, in our governmental agreement, but at this point, we anticipate that the school district will be absorbing the cost since its installation on the school buses that they utilize.
Okay. And so, if that is the case, and I know that's to be determined, then if they collect the revenues from the tickets, then they would, the revenue would be theirs, I'm assuming, then?
Well, the city process would collect any tickets issued.
Okay. And overall, I think, I think this is great. I think anything that we can do to protect our, our young people that are on the buses as well as the personnel that are driving the buses to keep them safe. So, I think this is a great idea. Thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grayup.
Yes. In the City of Peoria, we have all are part of some four school districts. It's hard for me to believe that a Limestone School District or Pleasant Hill School District wouldn't want to be included in this. For example, in Ward Cliff, part of that is 150 and part of it's Limestone. Is there any way we can maybe do something tonight which would allow us to work with them as well if they would come forward? Or do we, would we have to do something separate with the way the discussion has gone?
The ordinance would speak for any district, any school district within our boundaries. If those other schools wanted to approach us and use the intergovernmental agreement that we're working on with District 150 as a model for how they may want to handle it, we'd be happy to have those discussions with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion to receive and file. Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at a presentation. Twenty-one dash three-eight-eight is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to receive and file a presentation on redistricting criteria.
Mr. Manager, Council Kapuska?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We just wanted to do a brief overview of perhaps where we are to date on some of the redistricting information. If you remember back in October, and that was sort of maybe before the heat of budget discussion, so that may have slipped through some of our memories, Attorney Lenzini was able to do a phone presentation about how we landed on the voting structure we have as a result of the 1987 Voting Rights case that left the City of Peoria with five single-member districts, five at-large council members, and a mayor that's elected at large. We were lucky enough that Attorney Lenzini was involved in that case, so he was able to give us some of the history and background, as well as provide the update that since that consent decree was entered, there have been two amendments to it, largely uncontested, largely gap-filling terms, that caused no real substantial changes to the underlying consent decree. One of the issues that we had the opportunity to speak with him about was whether or not the city could consider having more than five single-member districts. Ten years ago, when the city went through the redistricting process, at that time, a substantial amount of time was spent determining if there should be more than five districts. A lot of time and a lot of maps were created to lay out those potential scenarios that did not come to fruition ten years ago. And as Attorney Lenzini sort of cautioned, the timing to look at something other than our five districts at this point simply does not gel with what the next election cycle is. If that is something we want to look at, however, we should make sure that we dedicate time within the next couple of years to starting that process so that all the proper parties could be involved in that discussion, and we would have more than adequate time to get through a fairness hearing with the court by the time the next census rolls around. So, from a practical standpoint, staff has taken that, as we will be sticking with our five district setup. That helps substantially for Josh to be able to narrow what some of the map options may look like. If you recall, back in September, they gave, Community Development gave a great overview of what our population needs to look like redistributed among our five council district. They pointed out that the first district needs to expand by 3,938 people. The second district needs to expand by 1,555 people. The third district needs to expand by 1,113 people. The fourth district needs to contract by 1,329 people, and the fifth district needs to contract by 5,568 people. Now, as Josh starts to put potential maps together for everyone to evaluate, what's important is to think about the criteria that legally we have to look at in approving those new redistricting maps. Now, the state of Illinois tells us that the city needs to be nearly equal in population and as compact and contiguous as practical. That doesn't mean that we can't have some variation, and the courts have approved up to a 10% difference among districts throughout other areas of the country. Once we get closer to that 10% limit, there are some requirements about what we would have to look at and what we would have to prove as far as the population makeup. But those are your first three general criteria. The other two criteria that were looked at ten years ago and will generally be looked at by every other community is respect for the geographical boundaries, the political subdivisions or communities with actual shared interests, and then there is a preference to preserve incumbent districts. I think that in looking at a proposed schedule, the city manager has proposed basically your off Tuesdays for January, February, and through the end of March if needed. Those are laid out in your council communication. So we would propose meetings on January 18th of 2022, February 1st, February 15th, March 1st, March 15th, and March 29th.
That's a lot of meetings.
It's a lot of meetings. So I think with that said, we would, staff would plan on having that first meeting on January 18th to have at least a few different maps available to start the discussion, to see perhaps where we're going to go from there, and to look for direction back from council on what sort of changes you want to see on those first initial maps.
And have we looked at locations, followed up with any other entities for locations where we might need?
We're still looking for an off-site location, to not have it here in council chambers, but to go off-site. For the first few, the PRM is available in March for the March meeting, so we'll be looking at locking those in with the Peoria Riverfront Museum. So, most likely, we'll probably be in the Civic Center.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Grab?
Well, I certainly think that this is a very thoughtful group here in the chambers, the city council that I'm serving with. But, six meetings? Seriously? You go back to 0-0, we didn't have six meetings in 0-0. And I'll bet you, if you take a look at 10, there wasn't six meetings. Are we just scheduling these in case we want to create some kind of a treatise on war and peace, government, you name it? It just seems there are only so many ways you can logically do this unless we're going to create a salamander.
No, I think that we just wanted to be cautious and make sure that we had enough time for the council to deliberate in case we get into a discussion that council wants to go in a different direction, or asks us to keep producing different maps, that we make sure that we're responsive. So, you know, we planned over the course of the first quarter of the year to be available to have those Tuesday evenings set up so that we could have council as a committee of the whole deliberate on this matter. If it doesn't take that long, we certainly can cancel those meetings.
Yes, so, I mean, if we finish up in February, we'll finish up in February, councilman. But I think that we do need to allow adequate time, because it is pretty, I think, a pretty grueling experience.
Really, in the past, it has not been, because we're not, we don't do things the way they do it sometimes down in Springfield. I would be, I have high expectations for this body right here, but I understand the reasoning, but hopefully, we can get it taken care of in short order. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question. What's the deadline? I forgot when we have to have this done and filed.
Technically, you have 12 months for when we receive the data, so you have, I think, a fall of 2022 deadline. But the sooner we can get it done, it's far away from any fall filing deadlines for any elections, the better.
Okay, so it just has to be done before the deadline for the next election? Okay, filing requirements, okay.
Thank you. You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there institutional knowledge here about how long this took 10 years ago, and how long it took 20 years ago?
We certainly have the institutional knowledge of 10 years. I don't think that we on staff have anyone that was here 20 years ago when the maps were drawn. But it, part of the discussion in 2010 did center on the number of districts, and that extended the timeframe considerably. I think it went into almost 14 months in terms of the discussion to get the maps drawn in 2010.
That's very interesting. Thank you. And also, Mr. Manager, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the gentleman who is our map whiz?
He's, Josh Navin is the senior planner that has worked on the maps and helped to draw the maps back in 2010, and is still here and is still working for the city, and is certainly prepared to do so again.
How available is he going to be to individual council people, or maybe several, to say, before we have a meeting, to say, "Mr. Navin, how about this? Mr. Navin, how about that?" How powerful is this software where questions like that are not something that is going to take days and days to figure out, but...
Well, I think what staff would say is that we'll be happy to prepare some initial maps for council's consideration at the first meeting, and then I believe it should really be a council discussion about how you take those maps from there and begin to have the discussion about how you want to do that, whether you want to do that in smaller groups, whether you want to do that just at the Committee of the Whole meetings. I think that is the essence of a policy discussion that you need to have as the Committee of the Whole about how you're going to handle that.
I don't disagree. But as to my question, if an individual council person goes to Mr. Navin and say, "How about this? How about that?", outside of the Committee of the Whole, is this...
Councilman, I want to respect Mr. Navin's time. He is still a planner that has work to do for the city outside of redistricting. And if council members come individually to start having that conversation with him, and it takes more than two hours' worth of his staff time to do it, I'm going to bring it back to council and ask the council making a motion to approve that action to be taken, because that's the policy that you've adopted in the past when you direct staff as individual council members to do something. This, it can be done. You can have these conversations. But council needs to talk about those ground rules for how you want to handle this before we start pulling staff away on council's directives to say, "Draw a map this way" or "Draw a map that way."
I think you've answered my question. I think what you're saying is that individual council members going to Mr. Navin would be very time-consuming for him.
That is correct.
That was my question, Mr. Manager. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Manager, for throwing all those dates. I mean, I certainly agree with my councilman colleague that I hope we don't need that many meetings, but it's better to have them on the docket. I would just mention that February 1st is my wife's birthday, so that might be problematic for me, but we'll discuss that later, so. But I do think this is going to be a serious task. If you look at the first page of the communication and the changes required in the existing districts, I mean, things are going to look a little bit different. So, let's just make sure that we've all got ourselves with the right mindset going into this, that the preconceived ideas of what districts looked like 10 years ago, 20 years ago, probably aren't going to be there. So, I look forward to this discussion, though, and I certainly think it's going to be educational for all of us. And I would just say that I was here 10 years ago when the maps were drawn, and Josh Navin, it was an all-star for us. And the committee gave him direction, not individual council members. Councilman, I think it's important that we respect the process and his time, but he does an outstanding job. So I think you can rest assured we're in good hands with Josh leading the charge on this for us again.
Thank you. I've heard nothing but good things also about Josh's work and contributions. I think that he had 11 different scenarios that the council ultimately narrowed down to one. But I'm glad that we're operating in these maps as a council of the whole versus the original recommendation to work as a committee with just the district council people. I think that we'll probably get through the process a lot quicker, and having everyone involved up front is probably the better option. Councilmember Seer?
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I think you just answered my question. The only question I had for Mr. Manager was, unfortunately for me, I missed a few meetings. When did we have the conversation as a whole to who would be on the committee?
Councilman, could you say that again? When did we have the...
Did we have conversation? Because I know the last, in 20, in 2000, 2010, it was different committees. And I missed some meetings, so maybe that's when the discussion happened.
So, there was a proposal that there would be just the district council members, and then council had a discussion and said, "Instead, let's do a committee of the whole." So, the decision was that, "Let's have a committee of the whole discussion over the redistricting process." And, you know, I think staff is just trying to get it prepared, and then if there's, you know, a direction that the council would have that direction to provide back to staff, we would be happy to take it.
So, there was a discussion?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I don't know. Did we get a motion to receive and file? I don't think so.
No, not yet.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Grab?
I think it would be instructive for us to have whatever documents remain. 2,000 didn't take long. Probably took longer than 10. But, do you have some documents, Kirktar, that could...
Some documents as a related...
...documentation of when this was discussed?
Yes.
How the votes occurred?
Yes.
Could we get those?
Yes.
And so, this could inform us on how it's, instead of it's, "Oh, well, it went this way or that way." You can actually see in black and white when the meetings occurred, what the minutes were of those meetings, and how the votes went. I think you'll find it's not as daunting as it might seem. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive and file? Did we do that?
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor. Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-one dash three-eight-nine is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director with a request to approve an interest-city loan from the city's other post-employment benefit fund to pay the remaining Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund early retirement incentive to be repaid to the city's other post-employment benefit fund over 10 years at an interest rate of 3%, with the final payment to be made January 1 of 2032.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything to add to that?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. We offered the early retirement window that opened up on April, or August 1st of 2020 and closed on July 31st of 2021. We had 74 eligible employees. We had 43 employees of the city that took it, three of the library that took it. That established a total ERI liability that we have to pay back to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund of $6,258,811. If we were to pay IMRF for that at 7.25% interest, that cost would be about $885,000 a year to pay that back. If we do as we proposed here this evening, which is to borrow money from ourselves and pay our OPEB fund back, which our OPEB fund is currently earning only about a half a percent in interest right now, that, so this would actually allow us to earn more in interest. We would reduce the interest rate cost by almost $160,000 a year. So, it would be about $726,000 a year to pay that back off. As we look at the salary of those employees that were eligible to take the ERI, that amounted to about, just under $41 million. The total replacement salary of the people that we've hired, or the positions that are vacant that will be filled in the future, probably during 2022, amounts to about $35.4 million. When you add in the debt service, the ERI did end up costing the city. It'll cost us about $1.6 million over that 10-year period of time. But, this will... But this will, if this action is approved by council, will cut that cost in half. It'll still only cost us 1.6, but it would have cost us 3.1 if we just borrowed that money from IMRF and pay it back that way. So, I do think this is an action that we took 10 years ago when we offered the early retirement incentive, and it's, I think, the fiscally prudent thing for the city to do. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or motion? Councilmember Kelly?
I move to approve, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Jensen? Madam Grab?
Manager, on this $1.6 million figure in interest, are you sure of that?
Yeah. So, right now, if we were to be, if you take that 6.2 million and amortize it, the cost to repay it would be $885,000. If we take it at 3%, that cost drops down to $726,000 a year. So, that's about $158,580. So, that's just under 1.6 million over 10 years that we would be saving if we borrow the money from our OPEB fund and pay ourselves back.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, just a couple of questions. I just want to make sure I understand what you just said. The early retirement program was started, what year?
We opened the window up August 1st of 2020 and closed it in July 31st of this past year.
So, I was here for those programs. I thought when we offer early retirement program, there would be some cost-saving to doing that.
There has been salary cost savings, but I'm assuming with the numbers I just talked to you about, that all of those positions would be refilled. That's not entirely the case with actual position, like, for example, the traffic engineer position in Public Works. We're not refilling the traffic engineer position right now and don't anticipate next year that that would be filled. But we do have contract work that we've hired outside engineering firms. So, really, that cost is absorbed by a contract firm. So, that's not on our payroll, but we didn't just assume as if that position was filled because that's a cost that we are still incurring for that at this point in time.
So, for future program, is there something you would change in your equation? At the time, we did this program, we were going to save some money, now it ended up costing us a little bit more money.
Yeah.
What would you change from your analysis of last year?
There's a couple of things. One, I think that, you know, we offered this program, and we thought that, we weren't sure how deep the trough was going to be from COVID when we offered that. Now, we're seeing that that trough really isn't there in terms of that. We've seen a stronger recovery. So, that's part of that equation in terms of paying that back. Second, if we're going to ever do this in the future, we just have to just say, "Well, look, we're not going to fill positions," and say, "These are positions we're not going to fill."
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think you might have just ended on what I was going to ask you right there. And I think on the motion on the floor that we're going to have tonight here, that this makes sense because we've got to be able to do this at the cheapest cost, I think, to the taxpayers as we can. But I think that the other piece that we've lost in here is we've lost a lot of institutional knowledge that has actually really taxed, I think, the rest of what happens here in City Hall, because it's with that institutional knowledge that it's really hard to put a dollar amount to. And we've lost a lot of that. So, I appreciate Councilmember Seer asking that question about what would we do different next time if such a proposal comes up. And I hope that if we ever look at a proposal like this again, we come back and look at the hard numbers from here, because I think we put a lot of pain from our citizens, from those that are still on staff here, from losing the institutional knowledge, and the savings weren't, they didn't come into existence. So, I'm not sure that this action really was won. Somewhere in the equation, if we say it, or somewhere in the action process, we've either got to be committed to why we're doing it and not filling some of those positions and being able to do things a little differently, or we need to maybe not start the process in the beginning. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-390 is a communication from the City Manager and Economic Development Department with a request to adopt an ordinance approving the FMB Holding, Inc. redevelopment agreement.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. This is a redevelopment agreement for 330 Southwest Water. That building is currently located kind of across from the old Hooters Building. It's in that parking lot where it's right next to Ameren. It used to be the Crooked Waters, you know, restaurant many, many years ago. This building right now in the redevelopment agreement is designed so that the owner could do some improvements to the building. What the city staff has put forward is that we would provide TIF reimbursement assistance of up to $40,000. Because the TIF is on its last year, this is just a straight $40,000 incentive to do the work that they need to do, to do some shoring up of the facility for any kind of flooding that may occur. This is an area that does flood as part of the river. It's right on the river. And so, this is some of the aspects of the work that they'll be doing in this area. Ultimately, once the TIF expires, then all of the property taxes go back to all the taxing bodies with this. So, this is just trying to use up the, kind of, the last bit of the Central Business District TIF in here, and we have one other redevelopment agreement later on the agenda.
Questions? Discussion? Councilmember Jackson?
Well, just to a point of clarification, this is work that is necessary, that would need it to be done in order to get a potential buyer.
A potential tenant in the-
Tenant, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that this be approved as so noted.
She's moved to approve. Seconded by Councilman Kelly. Please cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-391 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to deny an ordinance to disconnect certain real estate, commonly known as parcel identification number 13-23-326-005, vacant land within Peoria owned by Lynette and Stephen Demannas from the city of Peoria.
Anything to add, Mr. Manager?
Well, the recommended action from staff is to deny. So, if that's adopted by council, then a motion to deny, an affirmative yes, if that's the motion that's made, would be a denial, so.
Right. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, you and I talked about this a little bit. The $580,000 that the city put forward on this, I'm sorry, I forget how many years ago.
1993.
1993. Thank you. Was this $580,000 directed toward this parcel alone?
Well, no. This was directed towards the entire development that was basically, the development that came off of Charter Oak Road that was Rothmere Drive, Newcastle Drive, and Castleberry Court.
And was there a plan at that time that the city was aware of to include this property in that development?
This property was annexed into the city as part of that development, and so that would have been included in that as part of the whole development as was laid out and in the annexation map that is, I think, Exhibit B from the documents that are here that are listed in the packet.
Yes. The thing I'm just wondering about here is that, was there a single owner or a single entity that owned all this property at the time?
I don't know.
Well, what I'm driving at is-
I might ask if Assistant Community Development Director Leah Allison could come forward. She may have that information. I just don't, it would be pure conjecture on my part to answer.
Yeah. My question essentially is, did any of this $580,000 go to this property or this property owner, independent of the rest of the development?
Not directly. This development was a part of an annexation with a subdivision plat, as you've seen, and that $580,000 was for the entire subdivision, not just this one piece. Is that-
Was there one entity that the $580,000 went to?
I don't know of the original developer. We could certainly get that information to you if that makes, if you need that.
Well, the thing that bothers me a little bit about this is, did we pay to help develop this property at some point?
Well, I think we paid to develop everything that was here, that was annexed into the city by the developer that was, that would have owned all of that property. It was all part of the annexation agreement to come in. And then, as the property was subdivided out, I think the petitioner's attorney referenced that it was sold by Jerry Weaver to the Demannas family. And so, I think at that point in time, it was probably the developer had it and then sold it off.
Thank you both. It's a little unclear. I don't want to allow this disconnection if some of, if this was to be part of the development and just never was. And if it was never intended to be part of the development, then fine. But I wonder if a, do we have a deadline on this, Mr. Manager?
I would probably turn over to the Corporation Council and ask that question. I don't know if there is a deadline on the disconnection request, but I guess that, is there some, is there a reason that you're asking that?
I'm thinking about deferring this and to get this information.
Off the top of my head, I don't know if it is an action that has to be taken tonight. I know that there, between time of filing and time of being heard by the zoning committee, there are deadlines. Once it goes to council, I think that it could be deferred. I will say, though, that from a pure legal standpoint, generally, annexation agreements are considered a bar or a heightened standard that have to be overcome when disconnection petitions are later filed, because at some point, there was an intent that that property come into the city. So, the annexation agreement is generally held up as a defense when a property owner later attempts to disconnect it from that municipality.
Thank you. I will move to deny.
Okay. Seconded, second, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Jensen?
I would ask privilege, to give privilege of the floor to the attorney for the petitioner. I think he could shed some light on some of the questions that were just asked.
Sure. This is the, this is the item that we had a public hearing on at the very beginning of the meeting. Is the attorney still present and the petitioner? Can you answer the question of Councilman Kelly?
I believe so, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I am not certain about the question about the ownership, but I'm reasonably certain that the, this property was, belonged to Jerry Weaver or his family at the time of the subdivision. And I would imagine that in connection with the request for funds from the city that were advanced for the infrastructure, that the proposed subdivision plat had already been prepared and submitted. And that plat, which I don't think the full plat is in front of you, but the plat shows the streets coming in and various lots for sale that would be for sale around these streets. And my client's property was an outlot, which is, as I said before, is kind of usually junk property that the developer decides they can't do anything with. And the streets, again, did not, do not touch my client's property. There are privately-owned lots in the subdivision between the road and my client's property with no way of access. So, I can't imagine that there was any benefit to my client's property from the funds advanced by the city, which I assume were largely for construction of the roads in the subdivision and, you know, putting in public services such as the water mains and electrical access and sewer and that type of thing. So, my clients have no access to any of that, no obvious way to get access to any of that. I don't think the funds benefited it at all. And I didn't get notice of the, that this was going to come up for tonight's meeting until late last week, and I was out of town for several days between then and now, really through yesterday. So, I didn't have a chance to do anything. I had not been contacted by staff or anyone on behalf of the city after the filing of our petition. So, until I saw this late last week, I was unaware of the city's position on this. What council raised tonight with regard to the annexation agreement being a potential bar is the first time that I've heard that, and I'm not really in a position to respond. But I can say that I don't see any reason that our request should be denied. The only thing cited in the request to the council are that the city would not receive real estate taxes in the future, which, as I said before, I think it's $70.76 was the total in the real estate taxes paid to the city from this last round of taxes paid this summer. It references the possibility of sales or other taxes from the property if it's redeveloped. That's purely speculative. It hasn't been in 24 years, and as I said, it's landlocked at this point, and there's no plans by my clients, and they can answer questions if anybody has them. No plans to do any type of development that would generate any such money at any time in the immediate future. And I've already spoken to the question of the $580,000 invested by the city in the subdivision, which, again, provided no benefit to this property whatsoever, so I can't see that. I would be happy, if anyone is inclined, to follow the staff recommendation and vote to deny the request. I'd appreciate knowing any other reason you may have for doing so, so I'd have, kind of in the interests of due process, I realize this isn't a court, but in the interest of having an opportunity to hear such objections and respond. but in the interest of having an opportunity to hear such objections and respond, I would appreciate having that opportunity.
I think you've answered. Has he answered your question?
Yes, he has, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you.
You're the Madam Mayor.
Yes. I want to make sure that we're clear on your motion, Councilman Kelly. So the motion, the item is to deny, okay? Are you moving to approve the motion to deny? Are you moving to deny the motion to deny?
To approve the motion to deny.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Was that your second? Okay. I just want to be clear on that. Okay.
Do I still? No, I don't.
I had somebody else in line. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is where the loss of institutional knowledge comes home to roost, I guess, right? But, Mr. Manager, just bear with me here as I have, go down a train of thought here. This annexation agreement from 1994 included this parcel, obviously. That's why we're having the discussion. So the developer at the time presented a master plan to the city of what he... his intentions were, and that included this piece of property. And subsequently, things changed, and he ended up selling it off. But Corporation Council, if you could just clarify for me your comment that the annexation agreement is a high bar to reverse. When you say that, I mean, if we allow this, my fear is then somebody else says, "Well, I don't have any benefit from the city, so I want to de-annex myself." So what is the standard that we would be looking at to avoid that kind of thing?
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. There are various cases throughout Illinois, Gaylord being the primary one, where they have found that when a property was voluntarily annexed into a municipality by the owners, that when they later petitioned to disconnect, they generally have not looked favorably at those actions because they have upheld those original annexation agreements.
And in this case, Mr. Weaver voluntarily asked to be annexed to the city, to the best of our knowledge.
It appears that it was a voluntary annexation. Yes, sir.
All right. I heard one thing from the attorney earlier that the petitioner owns additional acreage that's in the county. So, I mean, perhaps the... it would be more likely to have them annex that to the city than to us set the precedent of de-annexing properties. So that would be my thought. And at this point, I would say I'm inclined to support Councilman Kelly's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is kind of walking through, I think, the timeline here is important to me and maybe for council or for staff. And I think what I'm hearing, and I just want to make for sure this, that on the time of the annexation, Mr. Weaver had access to this property, and this parcel was put in for the annexation at that time. And a transfer of this property, either through sale or some other thing, happened after that annexation. Am I correct? Somehow, this was sold from Mr. Weaver after the annexation went through. Correct?
That appears to be so. Yes, sir.
And at that time, it was known that it was within the city at that time of that sale?
It would have been not... the annexation agreement should have been recorded, plus the tax bill would have reflected that.
And I guess here's... and I feel for half the property being in the county, half the property not being... or in the city, you know, and half and half. But the ability, I think, to access this at this time was probably considered at the time of purchase, I would assume, and how the property would be annexed or would be accessed, whether that would be the access to the property that was in the county, therefore, or whether at that time it was going to be within agreement with Mr. Weaver at the time to be able to have access from one of those roads. So it seems like the city has put in the investment into this property in a way as a total piece. And down the line, the developer of the property sold that to somebody who had an interest in purchasing it for... and I think, you know, they're here tonight. And I don't want to assume that I know why they purchased it. It matches up nicely to the other property they have. But now we're asked tonight to be able to take it out of the city long after it was put in and long after that sale was done, knowing that it was within the city. And while I, again, do feel for the owners, and there may not be a benefit at this point in time, I don't know what that benefit might be like in the future. And having heard from you that there is a higher bar to de-annex something than there is to annex it, I think the timeline here is important because it has transferred at least once under the knowledge that this was within the city. So I would be inclined to support Councilman Kelly's motion here to deny as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just a quick question. Was the original intent here to combine this parcel with the larger parcel under one tax ID or continue to leave it as its own stand alone if this were to be approved?
Yes.
My understanding is that it was sold off to my clients because it had... the subdivision plan did not provide access to it. There was no plan to provide that, and there certainly was no agreement, as I think Councilman Ruckregel wondered, certainly no agreement between Mr. Weaver and my clients that there would be access. The whole point was that because it was adjacent to the Ravina property, that they could provide access at some point in time if they wanted. Now, that's never been done. There's no, again, no street access or anything. The only way to get there is walk through somebody's yard in Huntington Point or to go through the Ravina property or come off I-74, I guess. But there was, you know, nothing... I mean, the whole idea was that because it was next to Ravina, that they might have some use for it at some time in the future or be part of their property. And quite frankly, I don't think anyone at that time paid any attention to the... at least on the buyer's side, paid any attention to the fact that the land was technically in the city. Ms. Demannas had said to me recently that she didn't even realize it was in the city until she started getting the stormwater bills, and eventually it became obvious what was going on. You know, the taxes are not an issue because the $70 a year is not going to make a huge difference to anybody in this case, and I think that's the only tax savings they would have. But... and my client could speak a little in more detail to some of the questions that have been raised in terms of what the intent was at the time of the acquisition. But I'm certain that there was no agreement or discussion about being able to access this property through the Huntington Point subdivision. And again, as I said, absolutely no benefit from the city investment in the subdivision for this outlot.
My question is, is the intent to combine this parcel with the larger parcel or leave it as its own standalone tax ID?
I think, depending on what process is that's involved, I think that they would intend to combine it with the property in the county under a single tax ID. You know, assuming that's not a... that's not work that I'm overly familiar with, I'm assuming that that was not terribly prohibitive in terms of expense or time. That... I know they would like to do that.
Councilman, they have two parcels already that are part of their property that's outside of the city. So they haven't combined those two together.
And the... in regards to what Councilman Ruckregel said, he mentioned something about a 50-50 split. It's really the property in the county is roughly 100 acres, I think, and this parcel is just less than 10 acres. So the vast majority of what they have there is in the county. It's just a small part that's in the city, and that's what they're asking to disconnect.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
I guess I would request, if we could ask the petitioner to answer those questions about her intent and when the sale was, it's my understanding it was right about the time that the subdivision was plotted and approved?
Sure.
Yeah, that's correct. Mr. Weaver contacted us and said that he had a piece of property that could not be developed as part of the subdivision. And the only way that you could get there was through our property, and that he'd sell it to us for a nominal fee if we were interested in doing that.
And what time period was that? About the same time, about 1993, 1994?
I would guess so, after. I think there was no way to develop, put any of the developments into this portion, and he realized that. So it was after he had been done. It may have been after he was done. I don't... I think it may have been after he was all done, actually. I don't know. There's no way of getting there from the development.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, be...
Go ahead.
Based on that, I just... I think this is a different circumstance. It's not us negating an entire annexation agreement. This is just one parcel, the last parcel that's never been developed, that's never been connected to the streets, to the water, to the sewers. It has sat there for 26 years, 27 years, not developed. It's connected to their 100-acre property that's in the county and not in the city. So I'm inclined not to vote in favor of this. I understand, you know, what our policies have been and why the city manager is recommending denying it, but I think in this case fairness outweighs that, and I think it should... I think it should be allowed. So I'll be voting against the motion to deny.
Councilmember Graham?
Well, I think there are two issues tonight. First of all, the counsel for the petitioner has felt that he did not receive adequate notice to prepare for tonight. And frankly, I don't think the council's prepared tonight because of the thin amount of information that has been given to all of you as relates to the City of Peoria's growth strategy, which took off in the '90s and continued into the 2000s. And if you look up on the board there, it started in earnest under Mayor Maloof, the last rectangular gold board. And there was a strategy that was designed to grow the city and capture revenue so that we would not end up being landlocked like a... like our largest school district. And it was a successful growth cell strategy. I believe that, really, we should give the counsel for the petitioner's time to better prepare, and I think we should be better prepared to understand how this fits in with the larger context of growth cell strategy. And there's nothing here that gives you anything to hang your hat on. You can just say, "Well, you know, it looks like it would be an unhealthy precedent." We might have a lot of people proposing to depart, secede from the City of Peoria. Well, there were a lot of deals that were made because of representations and things that advanced the interests of the taxpayers of the City of Peoria, and so we're being asked to do something here. I just think that it's unfair to the petitioner to make a decision tonight, and I think the council's poorly prepared in understanding the overall growth cell strategy and how this fits into it and what the ramifications could be. So I'm not really prepared to vote to deny it or to accept it tonight. I would make a substitute motion to defer it until we can get that preparation work done.
Second. Question, Councilmember Kelly?
Against the substitute motion. It seems to me, and I... this is very difficult for me because I know the petitioner and I know the person who sold this property to the petitioner. Nevertheless, first of all, it seems to be a little flip about this. The original buyer didn't understand what he was buying, and the secondary buyer didn't understand what they were buying. Now, really, the secondary buyer purchased this years ago with eyes open, for whatever reason, and I don't have any idea what the reason was. Now, the petitioner doesn't want to be in the city any longer. It seems to me that we have two folks involved in the real estate who either allegedly don't know what they're doing or whatever their plan was, it doesn't work anymore. I'd be fairly neutral on this, even with that, but for what Councilman Regenbach had to say. If we can just de-annex or disconnect, I'm sorry, disconnect and disconnect and disconnect around the edges of the city, I think this would be a bad precedent. $70 a year, I think, is rather modest. I don't have any right to say that. So... but... so I'll be voting against the deferral. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Rarely do I come in here without a very definitive opinion on something. And if I do, it's pretty quickly cleared up in discussion. I still don't have a definitive opinion, so evidently I need to do my own additional homework on this, so I will support the deferral.
You support deferral. Is there a date? Do we have a date? January 11th is our next meeting. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you. I think it's only fair to give the petitioner time to be able to present and have the time to be able to look at what they need to look at. And unless the petitioner tells us that there is some sort of deadline, and I'm just kind of looking at it, and I don't see that... an indication that there's a deadline on this, I'd rather make for sure that we give the right time to be able to have all things considered on this. So I'll be in support of a deferral.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We're going to vote on a substitute motion to defer to January 11th, our next council meeting. Please cash your ballots. Motion passes with two nays. Seer and Kelly. Madam Clerk?
21-392 is a communication from the city manager and Corporation Council with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Subsection 59 of the Code of the City of Peoria to revise Subclass 1 supplemental license area.
Ms. Counsel, Kapasta?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What you have before you is an ordinance that would remove the possibility of obtaining a 4:00 AM liquor license in the warehouse district. You can see from the attached map that it takes the existing 4:00 AM liquor license zone and removes the warehouse district. It does leave us with sort of a northern and a southern availability for those. At the southern edge of the warehouse district, we would be left with one existing license holder, the Status Night Club at 1412... holder, the Status Nightclub at 1412 Southwest Jefferson, and obviously that would remain in place until there was an issue with that license where perhaps they could no longer comply with the site approval or any other regulations.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This has been bred out of many discussions with Warehouse District folks, the Warehouse District Association. I'm not sure if everyone knew there was a Warehouse District Association, but there's some very committed folks down there that are passionate about their area and their investment there, and with the increasing amount of focus on becoming more residential-focused and converting some of these buildings into residential, there's some concern that some of the 4:00 AM challenges that have been seen in the Central Business District would become part of the challenges in the Warehouse District. And to prevent that from happening, they're very supportive of this and getting in front of the topic. And even the bar owners in the area would like to prevent 4:00 AM licenses in the area down there. At one point, they thought it might be a good idea and wanted to be included, but they no longer feel that way and that the trend is to increase the residential along with the, the street retail business there and that 4:00 AM license would hurt the, some of those high rises being converted into residential living. And so they would like to see us move forward with this, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel? Our discussion, Councilmember Jackson? Oh, sorry, there you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do agree with Councilmember Euler in the fact that, you know, we are hoping to increase residential facilities, units in the Warehouse District, and as we move to do that, obviously, you know, there, there will potentially be more concerns from the possibility of problems with additional bars, bars that are open at 4:00 AM. I do have a question, though, about the status. Did you say their liquor license is up for approval, or what's the status of that?
Thank you, Councilwoman. They would be the only facility in the Warehouse District that would be able to continue to maintain a 4:00 AM license until one of those conditions we laid out in the council communication occurred, because they are currently a 4:00 AM license holder.
What could we do to get them included with the rest of the bars that would be prohibited from getting 4:00 AM licenses? And I say that because I've had conversations with residents that live down in that area. I've had conversations with business owners, the owner of the break company who ha, and as well as the other, well, I, a couple of other business owners that have complained numerous times about, well, the litter. We know the status has, has had problems in the past, and there's been several name changes. And I know over the last couple of years, there have been, well, this was, yeah, I think the lights are still down there, the, the big boom lights that are placed down there just, I think, to observe the activity that goes on in the parking lot out there. There have been shootings, there have been all kinds of problems in addition to fights. So I, I have serious problems with the status being allowed to continue to have its 4:00 AM liquor license because of the concerns that have been brought up to me by the business owners as well as the residents in that area. And the fact that there are additional lights down there now that have been put up over the last year or two is indicative of the, the nuisance that that facility has created in the community. So I, I would like to see the status prohibited from continuing to have a 4:00 AM license for those very reasons that I have stated. It's become a nuisance for the community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All very good points, and I think that our liquor compliance inspector and our legal department, our police department, as well as our public works department and code enforcement have been very responsive to some of those complaints that have occurred there in the last year. When looking at any type of complaint, whether they have a 4:00 AM license or a midnight license, we can certainly have some additional conversations with the police department if we are continuing to receive complaints in that area. That we want to look at regardless of, of what type of license they have. As to the 4:00 AM license, they are eligible for a 4:00 AM license now. As I said, however, if there are issues that continue where we may need to amend their plan of operation, perhaps shortening their hours could be one of those items that we look at. But at this point, I'm not aware of any ongoing issue that would prevent them from continuing to be eligible for that, but I'd be happy to have some more conversations with you about that.
I'm not happy with the way things are, have been going there, and I, I would say that, given the fact that we've been dealing with COVID over the last year and a half, is not a good measure for what is usually the case at the status. So I am adamantly opposed to allowing them to continue to stay open at 4:00 AM for all those reasons I've stated. And, and I do know I can't talk much about it, but as we look to redevelop in those areas, and I do know some of those conversations are going on, that could be, the presence of them being open, allowed to stay open at 4:00 AM could potentially hinder our ability to bring redevelopment to that area because of the chronic nuisance nature of that facility. So I don't understand why we cannot include them in this, you know, this ordinance that would prohibit them from continuing to stay open until 4:00 because of the nature of what is going on. And the fact that we still have those lights down there is, says to me that they have not been able to, at least that's been what business owners and residents have shared to me, they have not been able to become, improve the conditions at that facility. So I, I'm adamantly opposed to them keeping a 4:00 AM liquor license.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I certainly understand, and I think many on staff have shared that frustration as we've spent time responding to some of those situations. Unfortunately, licenses are a property interest, and once awarded, they can only be revoked with proper due process. So that's why we have a liquor commission that if a license holder does something that violates one of our rules and regulations, we have the opportunity to suspend their license, revoke their license. We also can continue to work with them on a plan of operation that allows them to continue under the conditions that they have. So understanding in the last couple of years perhaps haven't, because of COVID, been very representative of the issues we saw at that particular location maybe two years prior. I think the city would be on uncertain ground to take away their license at this point with no grounds for revocation or alter amendment that are listed in the statute.
Well, like I said, I'll be, when are they, are they up for renewal? How does that process work?
It's annual. I, I can't remember if it runs calendar year or if it actually runs June 1st, but I'll be happy to get you some additional background information on their particular license and what they're currently operating under.
I look forward to receiving that. Thank you.
Either counsel or Mr. Manager, how far south does the Warehouse District go? Does it cross MacArthur?
So the, the, the map that you have in your packet shows that the Warehouse District does go south of MacArthur. I think we followed the Warehouse District TIF boundaries that are laid out in this map, so, and there is a legal description that goes along with it, but we can certainly, you know, blow this up for you and send that out to council so you can see what those boundary lines look like. But it does go south of MacArthur, southwest of MacArthur.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I definitely respect the, the comments of my colleague, Ms., Ms. Denise Jackson, and I am aware of the issues that locations have had in the past of being open to 4:00 AM. One of the things, though, that I think that we need to consider is what do we want the long time, the long-term vision of the warehouse to be, Warehouse District to be? And when you talk about developing, you're going to be bringing in the condos, the high-rise apartments, things of that nature, and typically, who are the people that live in those? It's younger professionals that we're trying to recruit to our city and retain in our city. And younger professionals want to have amenities, and some of those amenities include 4:00 AM establishments. When you go to urban cities, it's not uncommon for someone to be out to 4:00 AM. And having the ability to go to a piano bar, like in a Chicago or a late-night pizza pub. Now, I think that we could work with our businesses and make sure that we have the right businesses with the 4:00 AM liquor license, but I think we need to be very careful about exiting the 4:00 AM liquor license in the Warehouse District because I think we could be limiting our opportunities and the amenities that we want to provide to those who are going to be desiring to live in the Warehouse District. When you go to these other cities that we want to resemble because we want to build this vibrant downtown, this is what comes with it. This is what young people want to do. And so I think we just need to really consider that if we're going to make this decision, that we could really limit ourselves on some of the amenities that we can apply for the Warehouse District to make it the vibrant community that we desire it to be. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Just a quick point. I, I do agree with Councilmember Allen in that respect, but based on the history of what has happened at the status, we know that is not the type of facility that would probably attract that, 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 that group, that mature group. And I'm not opposed to 4:00 AM liquor licenses, but I do think it's up to the owner to conduct responsible businesses, safe, safe businesses. And based on what has transpired at the status, I doubt very seriously that those millennials or those, the kind of folks that you're talking about would probably want to go down there based on the history of violence that has occurred there. And I think that when we're talking about entertainment, we want to make sure that, yes, I was out at an event over the weekend, a wonderful event. Of course, there was no liquor, but people want to know that, especially in the downtown area, wherever they go, they, they're going to be safe and they don't have to worry about violence or, or safety. And that particular facility has not been able to consistently, has not been able to consistently ensure that its patrons that frequent that nightclub will be safe. There's just been too many acts of violence, and there's still continuously problems with litter and broken glass on a regular basis. And that hap, that, that has happened, that has not stopped. So that says to me that we've got some issues down there, and that's, that's not the kind of place we would want to see people patronized. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Just for clarification, my comments were more so directed to the entire Warehouse District, not necessarily site-specific. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
At the risk of running a little longer, I would just like to support Councilwoman Jackson's perspective. That's not to deny this ordinance or this change, but I think that we need to keep our eye on this place and, let's say, with, with some prejudice. And if we can find a way to rid the neighborhood of this operation, I think we should. In the meantime, I'm very much in favor of the ordinance. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have a, a motion to approve the ordinance. Discussion, please cash your ballots. Motion passes with two nays, Allen and Jackson. Madam Clerk?
21-393 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class N1 institutional district for multifamily residential housing for the homeless for the property located at 415 St. Mark's Court, 509 St. Mark's Court, 122 Northeast Greenleaf Street, and 113 Fowler Street, Peoria, Illinois.
Councilmember Grab?
Mr. Manager, any indication that change in Unity Point's status would interfere with these plans or change, alter these plans?
Councilman, I'm not aware of any. I know that the petitioner is here. They may have more information in that regard, but I don't believe so. If you'd like, I could ask Director Doolin to come to the microphone just to kind of give you a quick overview of, of the project, the proposed project. And we do have Christine Call and Eileen Seddy that are here from Phoenix Development Services as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a special use, this is one of the, the steps for Phoenix Community Development Services to bring a wonderful project to our community. In the application they submitted, they had a tremendous amount of community support for this project. I'm gonna, I'll ask the petitioner, I believe is here, a representative from Methodist, as well as Chris Call with Phoenix Community Development Services, who I think will do better justice to explain what this project is and what this project will do for our community.
Go, Ms. Call.
Thank you for considering the action tonight. So I do want to point out that Unity Point is actually the petitioner because they're their current owner, and they do have a representative here. As far as any potential change that might be affected by their recent announcement, we actually have a purchase agreement on the property, so that would not be influenced one way or another by any actions that have recently been discussed. Having said that, this development is proposed for 55 units of permanent supportive housing on the upper floors of the building. And I do want to clarify one point is that in the notes in the Planning and Zoning Commission, it said that we said it would end homelessness. What we said is it'll end family homelessness. The majority of these units are one, two, and three-bedroom apartments for families, and so this would eliminate the current waiting list of families that are on the homeless continuum of care master waitlist. We would offer the same supportive services that we offer at all of our other permanent supportive housing programs. However, the residents of the property are leaseholders, they're protected by landlord tenant law, and they're also have the right to decline service participation. That cannot be a condition of them living there since they're a leaseholder. With that, I can answer any questions?
No questions. Does the representative from Unity Point want to speak, please?
Thank you, Chairwoman. In regards to the question on whether or not the, the announcement that we made yesterday, it won't affect anything. We, that facility is actually locally owned by Methodist already anyway, so I'd get happy to answer any questions from the Unity Point side as well.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I enthusiastically support this project. I actually was attending Councilwoman Jackson's press conference last week, talking about everything that's going on in the First District. And Ms. Hall was there from the Phoenix Community Development Services Center, and she talked about a number of the projects that they're working on, including this one. I did mention to her at some point at a later meeting, I'd love to have her on the agenda to just give us an update of all the different programs and projects that they are working on and that they've done in the last couple of years, a lot of it through some of city funding. I just hats off to her and the program and everything that they're doing. So I hope the rest of the council will get behind this. It is something that we definitely need in our city, and we know that Phoenix Community Development Services can do a good job. They've proven themselves over and over again, and they're helping us and, or fight this problem that we're facing as a city. So I, with that, I move to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just want to concur with what Councilmember Jensen has said. If this project were directly in my neighborhood, I would support it because of the lack of housing for homeless people in our community. And I do know from years past, having conversations with veterans, we have in the past dealt with numbers of homeless vets. And so I do know that there has been a tremendous need for housing, not only for homeless vets, but for just homeless individuals and families. And I think that as people are impacted in ways we are not always aware of, we have to be considerate, we have to be compassionate, and do whatever we can to make sure that their basic needs of food and shelter are provided. So I am excited about this project. I thank you, Christine, for Phoenix Development and your hard work. And I think that as with any project, if we are willing to work with the developers, we can have a good project. We can have good neighbors regardless of where we live. So I enthusiastically support this, and I thank you for your efforts at the Phoenix Development. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to give an opportunity to clarify a couple of things because there was some differences out there regarding this project. Regarding the demographics, who will be allowed to stay at these properties? Can you just elaborate a little bit about the population that will be staying there? And then also, will those who have been convicted of sex offenses, will they be allowed to stay at the property?
So first off, the demographics are really driven actually by the HUD's federal definition of homelessness. And so under that law, the status of homelessness is defined, and the local continuums of care, which is currently housed under the United Way, is the entity that is responsible for managing a centralized waitlist. So we do not maintain waitlists for our properties ourselves. So once they are determined to meet the federal definition for homelessness and are placed on that waitlist, they are brought down off of that waitlist in the order in which they are on there. The order in which they are on there is driven kind of by the vulnerability. So how likely are they to die if they stay on the streets? And then their service needs, so that defines the order. Having said that, our properties, all of our properties, including this proposed development, are within the 500-feet requirement that the state of Illinois prohibits sex offenders. So no registered sex offenders will be allowed to live in the development.
Thank you for that. And also for the record, I will be abstaining from this vote as an employee of Methodist College of Unity Point Health. Thank you.
You're welcome. There's no more discussion. We have a motion on the floor. Oh, well, I guess we do have more. Councilmember Kelly.
The person who makes these meetings go on too long.
What's that?
I said, the person who likes to make these meetings go on too long.
There you go.
I think I will be voting for this. However, I am not confident that we're going to address these problems. We keep doing things like this. I remember, I don't remember when public housing began, but public housing began as a very temporary way to help people out who kind of hit the skids for a moment and kind of bring them on their way. The system itself encouraged people to stay and stay and stay, and now we have a population, partial population, that doesn't know anything else. We got very, very smart about people who had mental problems. We had Peoria State Hospital, a large area, large grounds. Many of those people went out every day and worked and came back. The psychiatric establishment told us, "We don't need to do that anymore. We have medications that can take care of all this stuff." As soon as they closed down Peoria State Hospital, we got a homeless problem. We had people wandering around the streets who used to be taken care of, and now supposedly some pills would take care of them. And either they didn't show up for their medications or the medications didn't work. We have, we make the accommodation of homeless people very, very, very inexpensive, which means that it's unlikely, or less likely, that they'll ever get out from under this burden if they're mentally okay. I just think so many of these programs, they're well-intentioned, we're very compassionate, all this stuff, and they don't work. And the people who are caught in them can't get out. Now, I know the intentions of everyone here are good, but I'm skeptical as to whether or not these kinds of warehousing of people, especially in downtown, is all that great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. And I believe, Councilman, that Ms. Call and others in this business of supporting transitional housing for the homeless can give you countless examples of where it does work, where it has been effective, where you wrap supportive services around these individuals, you help them to get employed, you help them to retain their jobs and provide mentoring and support. There's so many examples where these programs work. Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I think, and with all due respect to Councilmember Kelly, I think that it is important that we do just what Councilmember Jensen said, is I think we need to have a presentation from the Continuum of Care and from the Phoenix House to be able to really see that we're making progress. The Continuum of Care, Kate Green, who many of us know from around here, is leading, and the partners of the Continuum of Care are really making a progress, and it's showing in our number of homelessness. And there are movements happening within the city that I think go often unseen, and I think that it is extremely important that we around this council really understand the effect that is happening. And that goes beyond this project. That is, I think, something that we need to get on the calendar sooner rather than later because if we look at the number of homeless within Peoria, we are making a difference. And have we got a long way to go? Yes, we do. Do we want to provide stable housing? Yes, we do. A lot of times, we have to work within the regulations from federal guidelines and things like that that may say we can do X, we can't do Y, but we're making some progress. And so I will echo what Councilmember Jensen said, which is, please, let's get on the calendar sooner rather than later, an update on where we really are.
Yes, I agree. We'll make provisions for that. Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just want to start with saying I've been a longtime supporter of Phoenix and the great work that they do. I do have some reservations about this location, and it troubles me a little bit from the perspective of downtown that we're getting so concentrated in our projects here in one area that there's three of them that I know of that are in eyeshot of each other in an area that we're trying to do a lot of business development in and try and turn our downtown around. And there's a lot of private dollars going into entertainment industry down there in that it's so far away from restaurants, shopping centers, and some of the other resources that these folks desperately need. I'm going to support it tonight, first of all, because I believe in the work Phoenix does, and I trust that they will effectively manage this. I know that they've, Phoenix has gone to great lengths to try and locate these developments in other parts of the city, and it's been met with great opposition. And there's really been no significant vocal opposition to this location, so I'm going to support it tonight. But I just want to bring that up as a topic that we need to be aware of, that there's much work to do in our downtown business corridor. And I'm getting, from the Downtown Development Corporation standpoint, and not as a representative of them, but as a member of the board, I hear feedback that there's real challenges with the homeless population in the area and sleeping in the parking garages and some of the things that are going on in the parking garages. And we've got some real challenges that need to be addressed in this space. And if we're concentrating the developments in this area altogether, we've got to have a very heavy focus on this and a zero-tolerance policy on issues to make sure that challenges get addressed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I too would agree with my colleagues who have asked for a further discussion on this topic. And if you remember, when we dedicated the 30 houses in the East Bluff, I requested at that time a policy session on the whole topic of affordable housing because it's such a misunderstood subject to many. So Councilwoman Jensen and Ruck Regal, thank you for reiterating that. And I think the Continuum of Care, just the title of that organization expresses what we're working for. To get the unsheltered people in housing, that's the first step, whether it's public housing as the next step, or Section 8, you know, that's such a buzzword. But then, I proudly point out those 30 houses of Peoria Opportunities built in the East Bluff that are taking people from Taft Homes and some of these other places and putting them in a home. So this does work. It's a problem that hasn't evolved overnight and it's going to take time to solve, but I really believe the continuum of getting these people from being unsheltered to living in a home is something that we can be proud of, and this project is clearly one of those steps. So I will also be supporting it, but also hear the concerns from Councilman Euler and some of the others, you know? So this isn't an end-all, be-all, but this is a continuum, and I wholeheartedly embrace that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the special use. No other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention. Allen. Thank you, Ms. Call. Congratulations. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash three-nine-four is a communication from the City Manager with a request to adopt an ordinance approving the 101 Liberty Street LLC redevelopment agreement.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the former Naylon Plumbing Building. This is 101 Liberty Street LLC is the petitioner here that is looking to, we're looking to enter a redevelopment agreement with. The total project that they're working on, they've already done Phase One, which includes the Arter Bakery that is currently in this location, but the second phase would be about $650,000 that will continue to expand the space for use by Arter, making it a full space for a restaurant. Again, as we mentioned with the previous redevelopment agreement, we're now down to $40,000 left in the TIF, and this would be a $40,000 contribution to reimburse their TIF-eligible expenses, thus being only about 2.7% of the total project cost. So again, a small investment on the city's behalf for a great investment in our warehouse district right across the street from the museum.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to approve this. I am a huge supporter, customer of Arter Bakery. I go there at least twice a week and a half since the day they opened, and this is one of the best businesses in the city. It is, you know, going like gangbusters, and I think this next step, they're going to be extremely successful in that, too. There's always people there, the food is delicious. If you haven't been there, please go. And so I'm very pleased to see this moving forward and expect that the rest of the council will support it. It is a very good business, and it's bringing lots of people down to the Riverfront and to the warehouse district.
Is there a second? Councilmember Jackson. Okay, and, okay. Any other discussion? Cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes our regular business. We are at unfinished business. There are no items listed. However, is there anything council would like to bring up at this time?
Is there any other unfinished business? Is there any new business? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to mention an event that I am, will be a part of this Saturday, the 309 Toys in the Neighborhood Toy Giveaway. The Yanni Collective, product of the project, Black Chamber of Commerce, and myself along with many other generous sponsors and community organizations that have donated monetary and physical toys to this giveaway, will be conducting this toy drive this Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00. We've got two different locations. One is the Tri-County Urban League, and one is the East Bluff Community Center. Toys are for children 3 to 14, and we will also have other things affiliated with each giveaway. The Peoria Area Food Bank will be giving away 300 food boxes. Major League Barbershop will be providing 20.20 barber shop certificates, so you can get one of those and you can cash that in for a haircut. Seven Strands Hair Salon will be doing hair on-site, and then there also will be a Secure Beauty giveaway with a limited number of haircuts and other hairstyles for the youth. If you're interested in this, right now we have over 500 kids that have registered, reflecting over 200 families here in the city of Peoria. As we know, the city of Peoria is very generous, and so we really appreciate the generosity that everybody has donated to this amazing cause. So if you would like to still sign up, your child, you can reach us out. We have a Facebook group, 309 Toys in the Neighborhood Toy Giveaway, or you can just shoot me an email, andreallen@peoria.gov.com, and we can still get you signed up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilmember Jensen.
I just wanted, again, to request to have put on the agenda an update from the Phoenix House, maybe early next year. I think it would be beneficial to the whole council and to the public to hear everything that they're doing.
Sure. I think we'll look at either the second meeting in January or the first meeting in February.
Thanks. You're welcome.
Councilmember Reganbott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Some of you may remember during the budget, I brought up the idea of having a committee to discuss the pension problem. to discuss the pension problem, and something that I've championed in the past. But in discussion with the mayor and other council members, the mayor put together a meeting with the council member, Ruck Regal, and I were able to participate in it with Representative Jahann Gordon Booth and Ryan Spain. And we kind of brainstormed some ideas as to how we can be most effective in lobbying Springfield, where we know the, the work needs to be done to change anything regarding the pensions. So it was decided that the most logical and probably the most effective thing would be to engage with our peer cities, the Springfields, Decaters, Rockford. And the mayor has already reached out to some of these mayors and has the ball rolling in that regard. So we're really excited to see how we can, we can unite as downstate communities requesting some, some modifications to the current pension structure. Clearly, it's going to involve labor. There's going to need, need to be buy-in from the labor groups as well. So it, not, not, nothing to report as, to check off the list, except for the fact the ball is rolling. And I just want to thank the mayor for her leadership in, in taking this seriously and getting this started. I also just have to give a shout out to our Public Works team, as I'm sure all, all of us council members get calls about potholes and whatnot during the season. They're, they're always out there diligently doing whatever we ask with the utmost in professionalism. So I just want to tell Director Powers, Mr. Maroon, our city engineer, Klaufenstein, that we appreciate that. And I know, I got a lot of feedback this year about some of the pavement preservation modes they were using, the, the, I love when I can throw things like Slurry Seal and Dura Patch out there, you know? I'm not exactly sure what else that means, except I know those are things that we use. And the Dura Patch, it's kind of an odd looking thing that leaves, it looks like you're patching the street, and, and, and that's clearly what we are. But I, I just want to give a shout out to Public Works for the, the leadership and creativity they've put forth. And finally, if I can have one more thing, if, if, if I still was a paper subscriber, I, I get the Journal Star Online, JJ, don't worry. But let me flash yesterday's sports page with our fellow councilman, Dennis Seer. For those of you that were hockey fans back in the eighties, Councilman Seer was one of the key drivers in the first Turner Cup that came to Peoria. So I just want to recognize you for that, Councilman, say thank you, and I'm sure glad you're on our team now.
Just give him a hand. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all.
Thank you. Very good report. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm sure the council will be grateful that you called on Councilman Reganbach first, because he, I was also going to commend you and, and the little committee on the pension work you're doing. And I wanted to bring up Councilman Seers, but he did it better and shorter than, than I was going to do it. So I'm only left with just wishing all, this is our last meeting before Christmas, and so I'd like to wish my fellow council folk, also our, our employees at City Hall and our citizens, the merriest of Christmases. God bless.
Beautiful.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab?
Well, the second district, which is second to none, would like to facilitate the enjoyment of the holiday season. Accordingly, we would like you to enjoy the southern part of District Two with our neighborhoods aglow with about 1,300 candlelight luminaries from High Street all the way down Moss Avenue to Western. That event will occur this Sunday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's part of Illuminate Moss Bradley, and you're able to turn your station, your FM station, to 103.1 FM for details about the event. We are suggesting that if you're driving the route, you should start at the east end of High Street, turn onto Moss at the corner of Sheridan, and drive west on Moss toward Western Avenue, and if possible, dim the headlights along the route. And we hope this will be an event that Peorians will continue to enjoy. It started during the pandemic year, and it's continuing and it's expanding. And I also hope that everyone has a great holiday season. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to take the time to invite everybody, if you are not busy Saturday, to Southside Community United for Change is having a Christmas feast at Lincoln Branch Library. And the library last Friday celebrated its 10-year since its expansion. It's a beautiful facility, and I, you know what? Kudos to that staff, because, you know, there have been times in the past, they talked about shutting that facility down. And the director, Cynthia, has done such a phenomenal job that she has broken records. She has been number one in sometimes summer reading programs. I mean, she is phenomenal in terms of her, she and her staff, in terms of what they do and how they treat people when they come in there. And they've had folks come from other parts of the city, north, south, east, west. You guys are so friendly in here, that they have just kind of raised the standards for Peoria Public Library. So if you have time, come by and get a Christmas cookie or something. We'll be there from about 11:30 until about 1:00. Say hello to the staff and look at that beautiful facility that has celebrated its 10th anniversary since its expansion. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you. I just want to thank each of you for your service to our community. You know, I know that we don't always agree, and we're not supposed to always agree, but we get the job done, because everybody around this horseshoe loves Peoria. You love this city, and, and really, you give your best, you give your all, and I respect each and every one of you. And I've enjoyed working with you over this past year. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, council. I'm still working on saying capostra, capaska. I'll still work on it. But, but I just want to thank you all and wish you, and, and Madam Clerk, and, and Madam Deputy Clerk, thank you for your service. Thank you all for your service to our community, and I wish you all happy holidays. We do not have any comments from the public. We do not have an executive session, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots to adjourn. See you next year.